Bring that to the table.
Okay, thank you.
As a chair, I'd like to recognize Mr. McDonald.
Is this the same as?
Yeah. Did he do a blue card?
Yeah.
Can we use that now?
But part of the discussion has been staffing and I'd like to touch on that. And I'd like to touch on the bigger question we're talking about. To begin with, when we made concessions to help save the college, we were making different kinds of concessions, including concessions that directly impacted on people's incomes. But we also at that time had 205 full-time faculty members. And those positions were allowed to remain vacant throughout much of this period of time. Went down probably in the neighborhood of 180, 185. We might be at 180, maybe not. So when you look at the word addition, the full-time lines, they're not additions. They're replacing people that were positioned, they're filling positions we had that were vacated to save the college. Secondly, at one point in our history. What did I?
Blew up the whole thing, wow.
And the world went dark.
It often does when I speak. At one time, we had 225 full-time faculty here, but it's all is pretty much where it is right now. That was in the eighties. So we went from 225 down to 205 before anything went wrong at the college. Then we went down probably into the 1018s. We might be in the higher 180s right now. But they're not additions. They're not adding full-time faculty. We're restoring full-time faculty. And as a matter of fact, we're going to be limited to restoring only up to 200 by the end of the contract. So we, five are gone permanently. Nonetheless, there's phenomenal enrollment increase. So I think that ought to be clear. When you saw those names of full-time faculty, they were not additions. They were not additions. They were replacements. This contractual language that is in the current contract that says by 2020, we will be at 200. Administration has to calculate that into their figures. But if we get to 200, we're still five short of what we were when the financial crisis hit us. Bargaining my voice is still problematic. And add to that, there are certain programs that are demanding faculty. There are certain programs that are growing, and particularly in the career area, that administration has to grapple with in terms of where are they going to go as they move toward the 200 number of full-time lines? And what process or what way will we get there? Now, on this whole issue of the village, we got into trouble because of two things. One was bad debt, that was 12 million. The other was Dr. Bad Administration, Dr. Mee's administration spent about $7 million on bricks and mortar. Spent at least seven, maybe 12, somewhere between seven and 12. I think you're right. And you should be, Mr. Sackowski. 12 mil. Purchased this bit of property, I don't complain about it, build a nursing area, they have it in the science area. So when you pull bricks and mortar dollars out of operations, you're going to have some serious problems. Had she not pulled 12 million or so out of operations, she could have survived bad debt very, by a slim margin, by a very slim margin. The Kanye Sullivan, Ms. Chadwick has rightly said that Dearborn has always supported this college. Thank you. To Dearborn. Because it's Dearborn's college. And I guess my feeling at this point is if we lose, you're where you are right now. If you win, maybe things, our fortunes will change, and we don't have to give the whole 5 millions. That's a decision the board can make. People went out, this is indicated, I don't dispute them, saying, hey, this is temporary, but we're in a new age. We're five years off from that point in time. So my view, because I've been involved in village campaigns for the college, and I used to help P-12 off of the barrel of village campaigns when the college wasn't on the ballot. Just let the voters decide. Let Dearborn's voters decide whether or not they want to support Dearborn's college.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the village renewal?
I have a question for Mr. McDonald. So are you recommending that we don't make a recommendation?
I'm recommending you put it before the voters. That's what I'm recommending, but my recommendation is, doesn't carry the weight of your recommendation. Because I can't get it before the voters. But is there a case to be made to sell it? Yeah. One of the features is you're bringing Dearborn's tax dollars back to the state of Michigan as well. But you really have to think about, not only the individuals you represent, but the entire community you represent. No one, we never hit 100% support in any campaign. But we've done pretty well. But again, I don't like to end with a negative, so I'll kind of end with a positive. If you lose, you're right where you are right now, and you have to give the voters a chance to say yes or say no. I remember I spoke to a previous board trustee about, go for a capital improvement bond campaign. Don't pull money out of the operations to fund bricks and mortar. And one board member in a public session said, well, yeah, the voters will probably support it. I would take, yes, they're incredibly right. A member of the board said, well, if we put it in front of the voters, they'll support it. That's the individual speaking from the individual's point of view, individual trustee's point of view, as opposed to the trustees speaking from the community, giving the community, during their constituency, a chance to voice their opinion. We've had enough of that in Washington. We've had enough of that in Lansing. That's not going to do it.
It's my understanding then that in June, we will be voting for this. Is that correct? No, I mean, the board will be voting.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, yes. To put it on the ballot.
In June.
Yes, yes.
Okay, any other?
I have a quick question also. So is that, so when somebody does ask, for example, what will happen to the college if this does not pass on the ballot? Would we just be in the same position? I mean, I don't think that that's true.
We would, we would not be in the same position we are today. We'd have to figure out where to deal with the sustainable budget numbers that I showed for 2020, 2021, 2022 going forward, where we'd be short in the, anywhere from 2.5 million to 3.6 million dollars. We'd have to do alternative revenue sources, or expense cuts, or something to, to make up that, that particular difference. You don't want to use your reserves to do that, because once you start using your reserves, you're using them every year until your reserves are exhausted. So say, for example, our unrestricted general fund reserves at 12 million, at 12 million dollars, 13 million dollars. If your budget is $2 million out of whack each year, that's gone in six years is what it is, because it's plugging, plugging the hole if you aren't plugging, you know, the, if you aren't getting your revenues and expenses in line.
Okay. Thank you.
I may have misspoken, but what I was trying to convey was, if it's voted down, the trustees are in the same position they are right now.
By not doing anything.
But Dr. Sackowski can describe, which is not a good position. It wasn't that, hey, nothing's going to happen. Mr. Sackowski has indicated what happens if you don't get the money. That's one thing that's, that's on board members may be grappled with. And if it goes down, you still don't get the grant, but what you do, but you've taken it, you have given the voters an opportunity to either move that problem to their table or to leave it on their table.
Thank you.
Trustee Barry.
Have we looked at options where we can cut if we needed to before vote on the taxpayers?
We're.
I mean, trustee Petlis, that's a good question. What are we going to do with the money?
We, when we, when we look at our budget every year, when we go through and build that budget, nothing gets added to the budget unless it goes through the strategic planning online process. What will it do? How will it help students? What is the ramification behind it? What's the impact on the budget? But we're constantly looking at things in terms of how to reduce costs, like with the IEMP, which is a long-range project, which would be very, very fruitful for the college to be able to, to do that. But you're constantly looking at ways in which to save, save money here, save money there, not buying your own copiers, for example, or getting into a leasing agreement with them. To, for example, bringing in our IT work, which happened this year, which was significant savings to the college by doing that, and increased our capabilities for disaster recovery and for control over, over support. So those type of things will continue, continue to be done as, as we continue to go forward.
Can we move on? Next item, please.
We're still, I'm sorry. We're still on the discussion items. Board of Trustees, policy updates. Trustee Hamud.
All right, this, this will be briefed. The Policy Committee met today, and we went over two policies that you will see in this draft that we'd hope to bring in front of you the next time, at our next board meeting. One of which was computer systems use, and the other was contract review policy. For the computer systems use, we had questions as a board of trustees, and our legal team will go back and try to get some of the answers, one of which is, what are the policies as to somebody using our server for viewing illegal content, for example? And, you know, viewing something is not necessarily included in the policy, so we wanted to make sure that we have something like that in there. So, so we're doing some research on that, and I know that we've encountered this issue in the past as well. In terms of our contract review policy, this is also still under construction, but there have been some changes, and, and the goal is to make sure that our contracts, when somebody enters into a contract on behalf of the college, to make sure that, hopefully, we can start seeing consistency through, with the forms, the language that's being used, that legal reviews at some point, to make sure that language is in there to protect the college as a whole. Right now, it's not the case. There are different contracts that are being used throughout the college. It's not necessarily consistent, and some language that we'd like to see in there for liability is not included. So this is under construction, and, and that's basically what we're reviewing, and hopefully soon, we'll have a complete policy to vote for you, to put in front of you to vote on. And that is it.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Action items. Citizen participation. Citizen wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who have submitted a blue card to the secretary, may speak at this time. We had one blue card. Is there anything else, Mr. McDonald?
He's gone.
Let's move on. Special consideration of action item. Other than 11 and 14, are there any action items on this agenda which board members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the action item below.
Trustee Lane.
I'd like to poll 8 through 10.
Recommended action. Move to approve action items numbered 1 through 13. Recommended agenda with the exception of 8, 9, 10, and 11. So moved.
Support. Well, and the exception of 14, too?
He only said 1 through 13.
Okay.
She supported.
Yeah.
Okay. There's a motion, and it's seconded? Was it seconded?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, it's unanimous, pass. And now we go to.
Number 8.
Number, okay.
Director of K through 12 Relations. Recommended action. Move, move to approve the appointment of Dr. Reginald Kirkland to the position of Director K through 12 Relations at Grade 2, Step 5 of the 2016-2021 Henry Ford College, Henry Ford College Administrative Association's salary schedule, Local 71, 48 weeks, effective June 8, 2018. So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Trustee Lane.
Yeah. So Dr. Glass isn't here. I have a couple of questions. I mean, I was pretty excited when, when I saw Director K-12 Relations on the agenda. We're the only board in the entire state that sits over a P to 14 district, so I was very excited to see this and thought, wow. So how come this is flooring me now? I know that we did have some information on May 10 about filling of this position, but why haven't I been hearing about this throughout the last months? Why is this striking me like a thunderbolt now? There should have been a lot of ongoing discussions about where this fits in with our district. We are the biggest supplier of students to Henry Ford College. Dearborn Public Schools is the jet fuel for Henry Ford College. So was Dr. Malako consulted about this? Did we have, I guess we have someone from P-12 here, but I don't want to put her on the spot, but did we have people on the committee that did this? You know, where's the report? I, I see a chart, but I don't know anything more about this. So I'm just really floored and really surprised. Beyond that, we have a new president coming in, in a month and a half. In the past, when Dr. Mee came, or, or Dr. Jensen, there were positions that were left unfilled for the new president. It seems now that, and Mr. Sackowski just referenced, there have been positions that have been left open for a year or so. Now we're suddenly in a hot flash to get everything filled? What's this about? We, all of a sudden, every single meeting, couple meetings ago, I raised another stink. Why are we filling administration right now? And, and what's our, what's our percentage of, Mr. Sackowski, thank you, you did mention that we're at 11% administration. That's a great figure. But I'm concerned with addition of administrators. So there are my questions.
Well, thank you very much. This is not new. This was in the board report in January, when we sent that out. There was justification that was put in at that time as well, and then it was brought up again a month ago. The, the position was one that was actually lower than the director. It was held by Libby Rutherford back before I got here. When she left, we decided it made the most sense to give more support to K-12, especially our early college, and especially our collegiate academy, but also realizing that we serve districts outside of Dearborn, and that we need to build those partnerships as well. And so that's what we looked for in this director position. We posted it back in November. The problem was, we had a root slowdown in, in HR, and so I'm not exactly sure why it took as long as it did, but they just did the search in the last month. This is a position that reports to me. We did have Majid Fadlala sit with us when we had the finalists. Of course, I can do nothing but wait for the finalists to come to me as well. That's a search process. So this isn't really a new position at all. It's a much improved position. And as I said, part of, and part of it was because we felt we weren't serving our colleagues in the early college, in the collegiate academy, and especially in, in districts outside of Dearborn. So that's what we're trying to rectify with this position.
Trustee Petlis.
I do, I do know that in our, what would be considered board briefs, in October of last year, this was, this position was included.
Yes, ma'am.
Under the academic affairs.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so I know that this is not, I was aware that, that there were many positions that were included in that. My, my thinking is, is that we never gave a directive as a board for any of this to stop, that this process to fulfill these positions in the reorganizing and restructuring should continue, and that we held the belief that whoever was hired as a new college president would share the support of this new structure. And so we never gave a directive to anybody in HR or otherwise to not continue to pursue filling these positions. And I don't think that all of a sudden pulling the rug out now is fair to the administration who wasn't told not to find, find qualified candidates. So to me.
Thank you very much, because it is, it is a key position that I think will, will benefit everyone in so many ways. It's also not a new act. What we did was, we very carefully, over the course of, of about eight months, held on to vacancies as they became available. And so we used no new money and created no new positions in order to do this. So I won't go through all of it. I don't want to talk about the names of the people that no longer work here. But there, there were a number of administrative positions that, when they became vacant, rather than refilling them, we held them in a sense in escrow, and then reshaped that funding in order to be able to put it in the areas that we felt we really needed to do better.
Well, I have to say, I'm disappointed that the board seems to be, I mean, it was brought up by Dr. Jensen eight months ago, yeah. The board wasn't updated continually on where it was going to consult with Mr. Fadlala, although I have great respect and affection for Mr. Fadlala. If that's as deep as we get in consulting our district, I'm disappointed. I'm really shocked that a board that's a P-14 board, that advertises that, that's one of our proudest reasons for existing, that we were not consulted on this, our superintendent is not consulted in this. So I think it's a shame for us to go ahead and do this right now with a new president coming in. It's like we want to fill everything. And if we, if so little concern is taken for the opinion of people who have apparent, well, I, I don't know. It seems that there is no respect for what expertise and governance we have over a P to 12 district. So maybe we should all resign from one board or the other. But certainly, this does not show to me that P, the P to 12 system and the 12-plus system are working hand in hand. It seems that they're disjointed, so.
Well, I have a perspective on it also, and, and basically, it seems to me like, for most community colleges usually give the responsibility to the president to hire and fire the, the staff, because we assign the strategic plan to the president to implement it. And how he or she hires people to get that done should not be the responsibility of the board. However, we are a P through 14 board. The majority of the people on the board are more P-12 than they are, than they are college. This is what they expect. They expect communication from the administration about the hires, because they feel they have the responsibility to hire and fire. So I think over the years, we have gotten to a point where we kind of think the college can be separate and hire its own people. I'm not against that. However, that's not the tradition, and it's not the background, and it's not the history of this, of this board. So I think the communication has got to be enhanced significantly with the board in order for them to understand why these people are being hired, what is the cost to the, to the college, can we afford it, the whole bit. So I, I may not have remembered this position. It's already, you mentioned it started in October. I really can't remember about it, because I haven't been fully updated to know whether or not I should vote for this. So I think the administration and the new administration has got to take seriously that this board has a responsibility to hire and fire. Unless that's changed, this is going to continue. So I do think that the administration has got to seriously review this and consider how are they going to inform the board about the positions that they are considering. And they know, they're trying to fulfill the strategic plan, they need to have the people to do it, but the board is the one that's approving them. And I think, I feel, that I am not communicated with regularly enough on that. That's my point. Trustee Barry.
This says K through 12 relations. Is it just Dearborn? No. I'm just asking.
Yeah, K-12 relations. 75% of students at this school come from school districts outside of Dearborn, and we have to take care of them as well.
I saw this posting, I saw the information come through. I didn't have any questions, so slow it down. I mean, I'm in the same position I did a few months ago, that we have a good team, we have a good leader here, and maybe, trustee Lane and Dr. Mee is right, there should have been better communications, but, you know, it's just a professional courtesy, but I, we have a president in place to make those decisions, to bring those recommendations. That's all I'm seeing, is a recommendation from the president. Thank you.
Trustee Hamud.
I think that we kind of ran into this problem not too long ago, where the same questions were being asked. And quite frankly, all goes back to the communication aspect of it. And obviously, there's a breakdown in communication somewhere, because, and maybe it's my fault, but for some reason, I didn't remember that position either. And the reason why we're saying Dearborn, and why we would have liked to be included is, like trustee Lane, this is a P-14 board. It's the only one in the state, and even though we service other districts, we want to, maybe we could have added in some insight as to, well, maybe we should have somebody else on the interview committee, or have we consulted with this person from this other school? I don't know, maybe we would have had some sort of an opinion. But just that lack of communication for something that the college knows would be so important to us about a director of K-12 relations, and the fact that it doesn't automatically ring a bell, or we haven't talked about it, or exactly what we'd like to see the position do, even in your presentation about working with the districts and kind of, you know, that improvement, bringing in more students, all of that, maybe that should have been a part of it. And, because it is, we do consider that to be an important position, as are the other positions, I think, that, that were pulled, and these are all administrative positions, I'm assuming. I guess it just goes back all to communications, and obviously, if this keeps on coming up, then something's got to give. And it's, it's, and it's unfortunate that we're in the same position again.
The president just informed me that he did notify us in February with his notes. So I'm suggesting that maybe more email communication, more way to keep people current, even though it's written in the written word, but there has to be some kind of a system that allows the board members to be more aware of the, of the employees that are coming to the board for approval.
And maybe I was remiss on this, but rather than drop it and give the status in February, when we said academic affairs is moving forwards smoothly with implementation of the academic reorganization, which included Director of Library and Academic Support, Director of K-12 Relations, Director of Professional Trades, and Director of E-Learning and Instructional Technologies, that maybe in February, I should have given an update in March and given an update in April and kept it going until it was completed.
I, I see that things would be posted, but I didn't expect somebody to come running in at the last minute before we have a new president with new positions. in at the last minute before we have a new president with new positions being filled. So, I know in the past, we have left positions unfilled, so.
I'm just, I'm a little bit, I want to be able to, be able to report and share this back with Dr. Glass. So, am I hearing that the board wants to see all of the job descriptions for all positions before we post? Because that is the only way we can rectify what you're asking me to do right now. We did everything but give you the job description. We told you in October, it was in the report that I sent, and we talked about it, Dr. Mead, in January, but then you saw it in the president's report in February. Now, I'm sorry that it took eight more weeks before the search committee got its, you know, work done, to be able to come forwards. I, I think it's an accident that we're here filling this position in May, we wanted to fill this position in January. This is why we wanted to post it back in October.
Well, I don't know what, I don't know what system to suggest to you. I'm just saying that, who is approving these positions tonight? Who is it that's approving the positions? Is it you? Is it you?
No, it's a recommendation.
It's the board, right? So, I don't know what would be the proper system to use, but this isn't working. Whatever the communication is, it's not working. So, think about another way to communicate. I don't, I'm not going to say that you have to submit job descriptions for everybody, but how is it that the board is going to be able to be informed to make these kinds of decisions? That's all.
Well, perhaps one of the questions we might ask then is, to what level you would like to see, because...
No, you, you come up with it.
All right, well, I can...
Yeah, you, you come up with a system.
The board has weighed in on vice presidential positions, that's it. This is beneath that, beneath a dean, this is a director position.
So, who's approving it?
So, we shouldn't be waiting in on that.
So, I have not seen that as, as something that a board approves before I came to this school, but if you're saying to me that that is something that you're interested in doing, I would like to be able to share that with Dr. Glass, if that's what I'm taking away tonight.
Well, do you, who has to pre... Tonight, all these items are on our agenda for us to approve, no matter what level they are. So, somehow or other, we got to be communicated with to make sure that we're voting properly, that's all, and come up with a system.
And no matter what other colleges do, this is on our agenda.
Yeah.
Even though it hasn't been seen before, maybe, but it's an item on, on our agenda.
So, then are we saying that whatever, whatever you know is going to come before us on the agenda, because we know the custodians aren't going to be on here, we know certain, you know, but the ones that are specific...
They are too.
Well, they, they are in a ma, in a mass, everybody's on there, but I'm saying, are the ones that are independent motions, as opposed to the, the mass, because it's the same at the P-12 as well, but ones that are individualized. Is that what the board would like to then have a red, red line through, so that, in advance?
Trustee.